And I trust that the Trails people will correct me if I misstate anything. There is not now, nor has there ever been, nor will there probably ever be, any problem in regards to private property and trails. This is strictly based on green spaces in and around the area. And when it goes near to private property and people are warned ahead of time, they're given their notice, their paperwork, whatever, where there is a major outcry, shall we say, where the people, there's just absolutely no way, it's going to be five feet from my door, you know, there's no way. They will not be pushing the issue. They will be going around, changing, rethinking, whatever. As far as getting stuff put in writing, I'm sorry, Ed, but I've got to say it. It's a living, breathing document. We promise to hit people for saying that. That means it changes all the time. As problems arise, they're dealt with, it's changed. As new ideas come down the pike, it's changed. It's constantly growing. Nothing in here is written in stone because it's always going to be changing. I do want to apologize to Dick Titus last week because after three hours and, oh my God, it was really a in-depth discussion. I kept trying to get people to understand, people will be notified that have the green space with them or by them or whatever. And it took three times of saying that and it got to the point where I said, as far as having signage and yes and this and that, vending machines, oh my God, I've had people say, well, of course, we've got to have vending machines in the middle of this little teeny trail. And I'm like, no. At the beginning of the path, fine. But it was misinterpreted that I was saying, Dick was saying this, and no, he wasn't. This is what I've actually had people say. And no, it's not going to be, we're talking little teeny trails. We're not talking the Fayetteville-Bentonville thing. We're talking natural trails because this is Eureka and we are natural by choice out here. So there's not going to be anything super flashy, maybe the occasional part, but by passing the master plan, we are opening the doors to funding from a lot of places. The master trails is not going to cost us people, us residents, anything other than volunteer time if you're so involved. You know, going up, picking up dead branches off the path after a storm or something, I mean, you know, it's not that big a deal and it's an ongoing one for generations. I quit. So all I'm saying is, we can't, nobody can go anywhere without approval of this changeable plan.
Mr. McClung.
That was it, yes.
Yeah. My primary concern to me is the element of vacation. And that, the property owners are part of the state statute, which we can't supersede that to request from the city council, you know, to vacate street or alley. And so we do that now. When somebody wants that, they go to Parks and Parks says, well, yes or no, you know, we think it's a good idea or not a good idea. And then they go to the planning commission and they say, yes or no, it's a good idea or not a good idea. But that ultimately, the person brings it here, just like what we're going through tonight with the BRICS. And so, you know, it's always going to fall here. I mean, it's, and that's the big critical issue for me because there's always going to be people that, you know, for one reason or another, there are encroachments, there's still lots of them around town that are going to, you know, they're going to slowly get cleaned up and, you know, come before us here and get that taken care of. And there are people that are going to request vacations, just like the Hartman Street deal that, you know, we're going to look at and, you know, it's going to be a yea or nay. And it's going to be this table's decision ultimately as to whether that vacates or Also, you know, when we had our little meeting here with Parks and the city council members in that workshop, you know, there's an understanding that there are avenues, streets or alleys that at some time in the future may be necessary for public vehicles, for cars, and that may be used for trails, part of that right now, for trails, and that's, and that's fine. And they understand that it may at some time go to the street. And that's just part of the deal. Doesn't mean they still can't walk. And that's, those are the two things that I wanted to make sure that people understood, that you're not, citizenry is not losing their ability to vacate if it's something that they feel is, you know, something they need or request. In fact, I think there's a lot of property that the city ought to go ahead and vacate purposely. But that's another day to discuss that one.
Mr. Mitchell.
If a resolution by Black's Law Dictionary 6th Edition says, "A resolution is a formal expression of the opinion or will of an official body or a public assembly adopted by vote." When we vote on this resolution, we are saying that it is the will of this council that this document becomes planning for trails. And if it's our will that they have this document, which they should, there's no doubt they should, and they should go after the grants and the money, and they should develop trails, that is not in question. And people should be healthy and all that, that's fine. And I, Bruce, or Bill sent me enough articles on health that I got it. I have it down pat now. But I do not understand, or do I feel that I can vote for this in good conscience and say that it is my will, that this document represents my will, when it contains the fact that council for trails, for some reason, needs to recommend in it that all unused streets, alleys, and green spaces are not vacated even though it eventually comes here? And also for the fact that this public notice for trails' construction is so specific about a different process, I have a hard time staying that it, that my will, when those pieces are in this document, and they serve no purpose. I can't believe anybody that's sitting over there is going to give us money are going to get all excited if it didn't say that trails doesn't, if it's not in there that trails doesn't recommend or they have this other process. I don't, I don't see how that's going to affect money.
Mr. DeVito.
Recommending is a pretty innocuous word. It has, in my opinion, no authority whatsoever. It's simply a preference. Speaking to Joyce's concerns, private property is the foundation of the Constitution upon this government rest. And it would take a condemnation by eminent domain to put a trail through somebody's property. And if there's green space next to your property and you don't own it, then you have no control over it any more than I had any more control over the neighbor that moved in next door to me. I mean, that's just the way it is. I don't own that property. I can't pick and choose who's going to move next door to me. I had the option of buying that property, but I chose not to. So it would take a condemnation and eminent domain to put a trail through somebody's private property. And if there's a green space next to your property and you don't own it, well, you should have known that going into it, you know, what the neighborhood was like. And having a trail, you know, near your property on city-owned green space, I don't feel like that's, that's a big encroachment. Nobody's going to be running up and down these trails at 2:00 in the morning. I mean, you know, we can put up all kinds of little canards, but basically, you know, I'd like to think they're going to be used a lot, but the reality of the situation is that, you know, they'll be few and far between and they'll be during the normal hours and nobody's going to be running with flashlights on their heads and up and down the trails at all hours, the day and night. I think it's, like everybody has stated, that this is a living document. It holds no authority over the powers of the city council. We're the ultimate authority in this community and, you know, if we want to dissolve the Parks Commission, then we can do that. But this is about trails and I think we need to vote on that.
Does the city attorney agree with that?
I believe so, yes. I mean, to go through somebody's private property, definitely you'd have to condemn the property, go through an eminent domain to get a trail across someone's.
And that would have to be done in court. It can't be done at this table.
They have no intention of it, so.
Ms. Snyder.
Okay, just real quick, I just want to, first I want to point out because it was brought up during public comment, Pat Luhien is not related to the Trails Commission Committee even though he is a Parks employee. He is a gardener, has nothing to do with trails. His vote was as a citizen, not as an employee. Just wanted to point that out. And starting yesterday, a lot of people were on the Internet yesterday. I counted 24 emails for passing the master plan, three emails against, and one that liked the idea of trails and had a couple of concerns, which I put them in the middle. Tonight, during our public comment, we had 27 people speak for passage of the plan, zero against, and one in the middle. That's 51 people for, three against, and two that like it but. That says a lot about the city.
Mr. Mitchell.
One last thing, and it doesn't affect one way or another, but I think that Trails should be very concerned about this topic that came up, and it's not Jack Moyer and his liability. The issue was brought up about insurance, a private owner's property with insurance and whether it would, how it would be affected if the trail ran next to their property or for any reason was to have run through it, especially if there was already an easement or a green space in the case of the BRICS. And I was provided with a letter specifically that the BRICSes had received from their insurance company that happens to be a very strict one, there's no doubt about it, and said that the liability issue on their property would change. And while the insurance agent didn't say whether he would cancel that insurance or not, there was a high probability. Dick, Zeke's Dick, also had contacted his insurance agent and they had said, if there was a major change in their assessment of the liability that the insurance company would have on insuring that property by a trail through it or adjacent to it, they would have to evaluate it. I have a bed and breakfast. I'm not going to have, the size of my lot, I'm not going to have a trail through it and Dicky Street's next to it and I have sidewalks all around it. So it really doesn't affect me per se, but in the six years that I have been here, my insurance company has had to change my insurance twice because the companies quit insuring B&amp;Bs. It's very difficult. At planning, when it was brought up, Mr. Levine got up and probably made a statement that I think he would like to probably correct, and that was, if your insurance company doesn't want to insure you because of trails next to it, find a new insurance company. Well, guess what? It's not, may not be as easy as he thinks it was. That can be very difficult. And so I think Trails needs to be very, very careful in considering that when they're putting proposed trails through, if property owners along the way are raising the flag that their insurance company is potentially reassessing their liability and their insurance may go up or not. That is, I think, a very crucial factor, and I would really appreciate the Parks and the Trails being very careful with that topic.
Mr. McClung.
Just one last little thing for me as well, and that just is that when my kids were growing up here, it builds the same way, that, you know, they rode their bikes, if they weren't on the street, they're riding them on the deer trails, you know, through the hollows and the woods, and they did it all the time, all over private property. So, you know, it's definitely going to be improved routes. Now they may even throw a few of the rocks out of the way. So, you know, in that respect for the future generations, it's, sure, it's a good deal. I may not get out and use it a whole lot, but more than you might suspect.
Ms. Snyder.
I'd like to call Bruce to the mic, please. Would you like to clarify something?
Just very briefly, about the matters of insurance, is I went through six different insurance companies last week, and I've got two responses and an email. And both of those insurance companies, when I described the situation, I have copies, I can forward to you all, when I described the situation of a city street that was platted but not being used, going through or adjacent to property, and also took an example of an easement, and both those insurance companies said, we don't see there's a problem, or one was actually, came from the underwriter themselves. So they are out there. I can give you some names if you need some. The other thing, I think there may be a little more being made of this resolution than is necessary, and I think maybe Tim could help us as to define what a resolution is, if you would.
Well, what you're looking at doing here is not really adopting a permanent law. A resolution is a temporary matter because as has been said, and we will offend Ed because he turned people loose over the Lord, no. It's a living document, it's going to change. And what's been said at the table by several of the aldermen is correct. Ultimately, possession of city property comes back to this table. So the concerns that you're turning over a lot of authority, no, I think actually you're probably turning over a buffer zone so that you don't have near as many of these actually end up at this table because maybe the Trails Committee can work it out, they can't work it out, maybe the Parks Committee can work it out, before you have 13-month discussions about whether you should vacate 600 feet or 1,000 feet somewhere in the city.
Mr. Perkupal.
Very short. Just want to point out, all it says here in Section 1 of this resolution is, "The City of Eureka Springs, Arkansas hereby adopts the master plan for trails as a planning document for the City of Eureka." Planning document.
Mr. DeVito.
I'd move to assign this resolution a number and pass it by reading.
Do I get a second?
Thank you.
You did that at the start.
No further discussion.
Accepted.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any votes?
Present.
Actually, if it's going to be for final passage, probably won't.
Yes, I wanted to ask if it would be for passage.
I think it's a motion you want to sit, that's correct.
Good. Stand by.
A resolution adopting the master plan for the trails as a planning document for the City of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, where as the City of Eureka Springs through its Parks and Recreation Commission seeks to become a more walking and bicycle-friendly community by facilitating pedestrian bicycle transportation throughout the city with a system of connected trails, and where as the trail system will provide additional recreation facilities for the health and fitness of its citizens. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the City of Eureka Springs, Arkansas. Section 1, the City of Eureka Springs, Arkansas hereby adopts the master plan for trails as a planning document for the City of Eureka Springs.
Roll call vote, stand by.
I thought the vote was for a passage.
It was, but she didn't take the roll call, so you probably need to roll call it now.
Good point.
I thought I said yes. I think she did.
Well, they want a roll call vote. It was 5-1, but.
Take a voice vote.
You are correct.
Stand by.
Mr. DeVito.
Yes.
Ms. Snyder.
Yes.
Ms. Seller.
Yes.
Mr. McClung.
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell.
Present.
Mr. Perkupal.
Yes.
5-0-1.
Okay, moves us on to discussion of fluoride in the water system. Motion to discuss. Mr. DeVito.
Second.
Floor is open, Mr. DeVito. Thank you, guys. Ladies and gentlemen, all the above.
On March 1st, 2011, the state mandated adding fluoride to municipal water systems serving 5,000 people or more. By my calculations, we're three years and four months after this was passed by the state, we have broke ground on the Carroll Boone facility to treat the water. I'm a bit taken aback that at the 11th hour and 59th minute and 30 seconds, that suddenly there is hue and cry from the public over this issue. I've got a copy of a resolution that has my name on it in 2012 opposing the addition of fluoride to the water system. Basically, that's all we can do as a city. This is a state mandated project, and to try and mount something at this point in time, I just feel is very counterproductive. We should have been involved with this years ago. I mean, they've already broke ground. We've known about this for well over three years. And whether or not I'm against fluoride, there's a timeframe where we should be involved as a populace, as a citizenry with our government, and it's not three years and four months after the fact.
Mr. Perkupal.
Briefly, and I've mentioned this to Ms. Snyder before and others, you know, my opinion is, even though you have a water supply that's a superior water supply in most cities, you know, if you have well water or even city water, you should probably have a filter system. And whether that is just a simple container that you pour water through on their countertop, or it's an undersea filtration system, they're relatively inexpensive, but they take out so much more of the contaminants that you don't normally, that you're not going to have removed in a water supply. And there are specialized filters, especially for fluoridation and the byproducts. The only problem I have with this whole thing, I mean, you can have filtration, that's okay, that's one. The other thing is, this whole thing about not knowing where the fluoridation comes from, that's an issue. That is definitely an issue. And it shouldn't be allowed to come from China because they don't have a great record protecting people. But, and maybe that's, Mr. DeVito, maybe that's why this has been delayed so long, is, you know, is part of that issue. I can't speak to it as a professional because I haven't really delved into it, but I have delved into filtration systems, and I'm just, I use one, and I think everybody should be using one, by two senses.
Ms. Snyder.
I'll get there. Okay. You may have forgotten about it over the last couple of years, but that doesn't mean everybody has. Some things take a long time to work on. The resolution that was done a couple of years ago is an awesome document, and Carroll Boone has copies of it and they understand. This huge 22-page stack of papers here is called, and I wrote it down because I always say it backwards, it's constructive notice given to Carroll Boone and the workers and the board, and I see Gene already left, I was hoping he would stay. Gene's one of the board members. This is the most incredible document I have seen in a really, really, really long time. And what this 22 pages does is it spells out very, very clearly to Carroll Boone Water Department what the state laws are and what state laws they have to be following regardless of the legislature sneaking through the state mandate demanding fluoridation. It's very, very, very clear to these employees of Carroll Boone. And we have lost a few since then, since the mandate happened and they've been fighting against it, and since we have turned this over to them and our council has taken this step, and the people in Eureka and Hot Springs and Fort Smith, even though I keep saying Little Rock, all of us have been fighting it. Carroll Boone is the only entity with the authority to select the exact substance, okay? While state law requiring adherents to Standard 60 provides some guidance, a water supplier is the only entity that has the authority to select a specific substance to be added to its own drinking water supply. Nobody else can do it, whatever company they get the fluoride from can't say, well, it's got this, that, and the other, and these amounts, and you can trust us. Doesn't happen, especially not with fluoride. Fluoride is a drug, it's a toxin, it destroys all parts of the body, topically, in toothpaste and whatnot, mouthwash that you're not supposed to be swallowing, this is where the dental health comes in. When you are ingesting, this is where the problems happen. And they now have studies that are decades old of what fluoridation in the water has done to people. All of this reminds the workers, if they go ahead and put fluoride in our water system, they are breaking state law and federal law on about a zillion different points because the mandate says to add fluoride. It does not include all of the other little chemicals that are part of the fluoride, which is arsenic in big levels, all kinds of stuff. It goes on and on. All of this is pointed out to them, and this is part of how they have been able to drag their feet in regards to the mandate and making us don't even, making us ingest poison when we have voted not to. Hot Springs right now is having a major problem because of their racehorses. Racehorses can't have this. It's not just us fighting it. This is 22 pages. I wasn't about to sit there and copy all of it off for everybody, but I have spent the afternoon reading this 22 pages in addition to Arkansas State Board of Health Rules and Regulations. And all, okay, let's put it this way, here's 22 pages, here's probably another 40 pages going over and over and over this. What I am asking that our council does, yes, it takes a while to get there, what I am asking that our council does, since we don't have the finances at this point to sue the legislatures who voted to sneak through this mandate, or to sue the governor for not vetoing it, we don't have those finances yet, we're tied up with STO. What I'm asking of this council is that we as a council pass another resolution in regards to, like the one that we did. regards to, like, the one that we did, Resolution six hundred, reminding Carroll Boone that they have been given a constructive notice, and the date was, I believe, May of two thousand and twelve. Let me check real quick. Yes, May of two thousand and twelve. They all have copies. The state people have copies. Legislature has copies stating that we are reminding them they have a constructive notice in hand. If they don't have one, we'll be more than glad to supply it, reminding them of the law and how they, as individuals and employees of Carroll Boone, regardless of the state mandate, how they have to follow the law and not poison us because the law states no poison drugs, no medicating people against their wishes, their desires, their knowledge. All of this stuff is in here, and reminding them they have to go by the constructive notice, not by the mandate, because the mandate is actually illegal, but rather than fight that, we're just going to tell them, you can't do it. And when the state tries to bug them about it, they can say, hey, guys, we can't do it. Take away your mandate. Hopefully, a new legislature situation next year will allow them to repeal it. It'll be brought vociferously before them, and hopefully, they will repeal this mandate. In the meantime, right now, they've got to be reminded. You can't even be breaking ground according to the state laws till they have found a supplier, and that's been a very hard thing to do, including pharmaceutical.
Mr. DeVito.
For the sake of brevity, because we have a lengthy agenda still ahead of us, if the two councilpersons who brought this to the table would like to redo this resolution and bring it back at the next meeting, we could address it then. One bit of information as to why this has been delayed is because there was not to be any taxpayer money being used to build any of the treatment facilities adding fluoride to the water systems. This was all to be paid by Delta Dental. Delta Dental did not have enough money at the time to go ahead and build all these treatment facilities. They have now come up with the money, which is why, from the initial passage three, almost three and a half years ago, to them having broke ground on Carroll Boone is that Delta Dental has come up with the money. So I plead with council that we table this to the next meeting. If you all want to come back with the resolution, let's address it then. We're not going to solve the issue of fluoride here tonight. We have a lot of things on our plate for tonight.
Okay. Well, I was going to make a motion, but I asked you to go up to draft it, bring it back, but I like the table better, so I make a motion that we table this until Councilman Snyder brings the resolution back.
Why don't we ask our attorney to write the resolution?
Ms. Snyder, let him finish his motion.
Well, I don't want to write it. I want the attorney to write it. He's the one that knows how to do it right.
Let him finish the motion at least.
My motion is that we, Mrs. Councilman Snyder, write a draft resolution, and we table this until she brings it back.
Second.
Ms. Snyder.
I would like to have Darlene Schrum come up to the mic, please.
Oh, no.
Darlene has done all of this. She has been working on this for years.
The reason for doing this is because we have pure water here. This is to give them the constructive notice, and this is very, very in-depth, and they have not even tested any of the products to know what they're putting in a building that they're building. You have to know what exactly, all the chemicals and everything that will go in that building before you start the construction on it, and they're not doing that, and that's why I'm coming forward again with this. But they're getting ready to do just, I guess, build a building and then hope it does the chemicals. The first step is to find the chemical that you're using and build a building that will hold that and make sure that that chemical is good and going out to the people, and they don't know that at this point. And they haven't received anything from the manufacturers, but that is not acceptable even by the Department of Health. It is up to them to do the testing first, then to build the building that will take care of the product that they're going to put in there, and that's where they're at right now. And that's leaving us in really bad shape because to put a product in there and they don't know exactly what it will do to us, that's not the way it's meant to be, and that's none of the EPAs or any of the other, they're not saying that. They're saying only fluoride, not these other products.
Oh, come on. Oh, wow.
And there's nothing to guarantee that.
I understand.
Don't interrupt her.
Go ahead.
Go ahead. Go ahead.
You know, something needs to be done, and they have been given complete notification on this, and I think you'll find that there isn't anything really left out on this. I'm sure the attorney could look at this and see how well it is put together. But we need our pure water that we have here.
Do you have a copy of this?
They gave me a couple. Well, one and...
I will leave this here.
Okay, thank you.
But please, please, act on this. I mean, this is for all your, and what you're saying about, yeah, a water one, but every time you take a bath, you still get all, if there's chemicals in there, if there's arsenic, if there's lead, there can be plumbing problems here, and just get on the Internet and read. Everywhere across the country, there are people, Tulsa, real close by, they're having trouble with their plumbing. They're trying to get it out of their water right now. They took it out of Santa Fe. They took it out of Albuquerque. New York City is even talking about it. It's causing plumbing problems, and there's things getting in the water that are not meant to be in there.
Thank you, Madam.
Thank you.
Mr. Mitchell.
I thank all of you for doing all the things that you do and listening to everyone.
And we thank this lady very much for bringing the passion and everything she's done. We have a motion on the table to take action, council to take action towards exactly what she's saying. It's not that we're not doing it, and we've asked, and the motion was to ask Mrs. Snyder, who I'm sure will get some very capable and remarkable help from the lady sitting behind her. So I would expect that we will get a resolution at the next council meeting in which council will be making a stand on this very important topic, and it's time to have the vote.
Okay. Any further discussion? Okay. Would you please reread?
Mr. Mitchell made a motion to table until Ms. Snyder can bring back a motion to the table. A resolution? Excuse me, a resolution to the table, and Mr. DeVito seconded it.
Okay. No further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Roll call. Okay.
Tabling.
Oh, thank you. Okay. We're tabled. He said we were tabled again.
Snyder?
You know what?
Yes. Yes. Mr. Mitchell.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Mr. DeVito.
Yes.
Mr. Furtisile.
Yes.
Ms. Eller.
Ms. Eller, calling for the vote.
I mean, pardon.
What's your vote on it until the motion can be, resolution can be won?
Yes.
Six zero.
Okay. Moves us to the actual number two under unfinished business, which is updated as opposed to yard waste.
Oh, my God.
I'd move to postpone this till the next meeting.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We post. Postpone it is.
Wait a minute. What did we just do?
You've got to stay with us here.
What was?
Yard waste.
All I wanted to say was this paper that got handed out to you. That's the beginning of the information that Dwayne will be giving out to people, so don't lose it.
Thank you.
That's all I wanted to say.
You got it.
All right. All right.
Good enough.
Moves us to number four, discussion of parking garage.
I'd move to ask the city assistant to set up a workshop on discussing of a parking garage.
Second.
Any discussion on it? Thank you, Ms. Don. No discussion? Yes, sir.
I'll just save it for that.
For the workshop? Okay. All in favor, say aye. Any post? Motion secured.
You're leaving council table.
Hey, I got a resolution written. That's what I did. Screw you.
Workshop. Number five is the discussion of multi-family ordinance. Motion to discuss.
So moved.
Second.
Floor is open. Mr. Mitchell.
I think we need our very patient planning commissioner, Mr. Ed Lesswig, to come up and introduce this to us in his esteemed way so that we can vote one way or another or do something.
Thank you.
Mr. Lesswig.
Okay, I am a member of the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission did vote six zero to present this, to bring this back to the council. Also, as a member of the Planning Commission, I'd like to make a statement. I'm in favor of moderate and low-priced incoming properties for people. Housing is important for everyone. Also, some misconceptions which seem to pop up on everything. An ordinance passed by this council cannot retroactively affect things that exist. In the case of this ordinance, it's basically saying that any property, multifamily dwelling which is in any of the zones except R1 and in business, the effective date of the ordinance is legally non-conforming. Do we understand that?
Can you repeat it one more time for me, please?
Slowly or just?
No, I think that speed is all right.
Okay. That no, all of the multifamily dwellings in any zone except R1 that is in business on the effective date of this ordinance is automatically legally non-conforming.
Okay. What's it, Lesswig? I don't see R1. I'm sorry.
I didn't list R1. R1 has a different set of rules. I'm giving background for that, and be patient. Okay, in the case of R1, the reason that R1 is the variant is that R1 is a case where multifamily dwellings that were in business prior to nineteen eighty-five and have remained consistently in business since then are also legally non-conforming. Businesses, multifamily dwellings that started after the zoning ordinance of nineteen eighty-five that have a conditional use permit are also grandfathered or legally non-conforming. The only variance here is that anything that was started after nineteen eighty-five in R1 that does not have a conditional use permit is illegal. Make sense? So, pardon? I don't know if there are any or not.
Because we couldn't find any, so. I, we've assigned this a number. Did we have, I can't remember. Do we have, we had a first or second reading?
We had a first reading on it.
We had a first reading, and then we didn't get to the second. Okay.
Okay. Now, the changes that were made in this draft from the one that Mr. Weaver prepared, there were objections raised by the building official and the chief of police relative to the way the document was worded. In section one, we took out everything that refers to the need to get a certificate of occupancy and put in that the owner of each multifamily dwelling complex is herein defined must obtain and maintain a current City of Eureka Springs business license. Section four, which originally had the words I just read to you as the new section one, and this was based on the recommendation of Billy Ray, Bobby Ray, excuse me. In the case of new, that is created after the approval date of this ordinance, multifamily dwelling and dwelling complexes, and in the case of a change of ownership or change of name of a multifamily dwelling complex, the applicant must provide proof of existence for each dwelling unit in the multifamily dwelling complex of an approved certificate of occupancy issued by the city following examination, et cetera, et cetera, which is the way it has to be done. There are currently something over twenty multifamily dwellings in the city. To the best of my knowledge, most will fall in the category of legally non-conforming. So the only requirement those dwellings and dwelling units have is to get a license.
Mr. Mitchell. Mr. Lesswig, is there any reason that we couldn't take out section twelve emergency clause and let this go through the normal, the second, third reading normally as it does?
I defer to city attorney.
Mr. City Attorney.
Honestly, my suggestion
Yes, sir.
is because of the rewording, is that you would take out the emergency clause if you are not comfortable with it at one, then you begin it instead of on your second reading, you begin it on your first reading and give it a new number, since it's been back through planning and it's been changed around. It's either that or you're going to have to go through each paragraph and amend, and it might be easier for the public at home if it was read complete from the first start.
So how do we do that? We make a motion to strike this one and come back with a new one that's rewritten? Well, I'll let Mr. DeVito do that motion then.
I'd move to strike section twelve of ordinance number two one nine eight and place it on its first reading.
New number.
Get a new number if you wanted.
Actually, you need to give it a new number, I believe.
Okay. I will move to strike section twelve emergency clause and provide a number for this ordinance and place it on its first reading.
As amended.
Your second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion, further discussion on it?
No, it doesn't need to.
Is this as amended by planning or no?
No. It's on its first reading.
The first reading, okay.
Tonight, it's on its first reading?
We got a roll call. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any post? Stand by for the number.
Does that mean we have to all read it?
Okay.
Tonight? Thank you, Ed.
It's ten minutes to my, oh, it's ten minutes to my bedtime. I'm teed.
What's the notice number? Two, two, one, four.
I'm sorry, what was that?
Twenty-two fourteen.
Two, two, fourteen, okay.
I also want to mention that there is a, there is a list that was put in your mailbox that might be multifamily dwellings I was able to identify. It's incomplete. Typically, there's a complete list. Perhaps to an ordinance when something like this passes for legal non-conforming.
We've got a second and third reading if we can compile a complete list.
So I'm hoping that if you observe something that's not on this list... if you observe something that's not on this list, you would let me know because I'm not aware of all the structures in the city, so...
Will do.
Those are legally non-conforming?
Well, at this point, they would be multi-family dwellings in this town with three or more units is what I'm... All of them is what I'm looking for. Because it would make more sense here in this one. Or to some 2214. An ordinance dealing with multi-family dwellings in Eureka Springs. Whereas the Eureka Springs City Council has from time to time finds it necessary to make changes in order to ensure consistent application and enforcement of the codes of the city and whereas the city has a responsibility to ensure safety of all residents and whereas the city defines the operation of multi-family dwellings as a business. And whereas the current code of the city does not address the licensing and requirements for multi-family dwellings in the city of Eureka Springs and whereas a number of multi-family dwellings currently exists in the city, now therefore be ordained by the city council of the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, the owners of each multi-family dwelling... Excuse me, section one. The owner of each multi-family dwelling and/or complex as herein defined must obtain and maintain a current City of Eureka Springs business license. Section two. The owners or owners' authorized representative must provide the city with a list of the number of available off-street parking spaces for each multi-family dwelling and/or complex. For each unit with no separate bedroom, one parking space per unit. For each unit with one separate bedroom, one and a half parking spaces per unit. For each unit with two or more separate bedrooms, two parking spaces per unit. Section three. Each dwelling unit must consist of at least 150 square feet of floor space for the first occupant thereof, and at least 100 additional square feet of floor space per additional occupant. At least one-half of the floor area of every habitable room, foyer, hall, or corridor shall have a ceiling height of at least seven feet, and the floor area of that part of any room where the ceiling height is less than seven feet shall not be considered as part of the floor area in computing the total area of the room for the purpose of determining the maximum permissible occupancy thereof. Section four. In the case of new created after the approval date of this ordinance, multi-family dwellings and/or complexes. In case of change of ownership, change of name for multi-family dwelling and/or complex, the applicant for the new multi-family dwelling license must provide proof of the existence for each dwelling unit of the multi-family dwelling and/or complex of an approved certificate of occupancy issued by the city following an examination of the property by the city, by the Eureka Springs building official, and by a certified officer of the Eureka Springs Fire Department. Section five. No variance shall be allowed for section one or four of this ordinance. The Board of Zoning Adjustment, following a public hearing, may grant variances for section two or three. A variance may be granted in no case to reduce requirement to less than 50 percent. Section six. The deadline for obtaining the business license shall be 120 days after passage of this ordinance. Failure to comply or receive an approved variance to the requirements shall result in the dwelling being identified as illegal. Section seven. The owner shall purchase an annual business license. The business license fee for a multi-family dwelling shall be as follows. Base charge, including the first three rental units, $65. Two base fee plus $5 per unit for units four through six. Three. Base fee plus $5 per unit for units four through six and $2.50 per unit for unit seven and a buck. Section eight. Failure to comply with sections one through four of this ordinance is an unclassified misdemeanor punishable by a fine of not less than $50 and not more than $250 per violation. Each day of non-compliance shall constitute a separate offense. Failure to comply with multiple sections shall constitute separate offenses for each section. Section nine. The definitions of the current building code and zoning ordinance of the city of Eureka Springs shall apply to this ordinance. In addition, the following definitions shall apply and shall be added to the zoning ordinance. One. Dwelling unit. One or more rooms in a residential building, a residential portion of a building, which are arranged, designed, used, or intended for use as a complete independent living facility which includes permanent provisions for living, sleeping, eating, cooking, and sanitation to multi-family dwelling. A residential dwelling, excuse me, business or building complex containing three or more separate rental dwelling units located on a parcel of land. A multi-family dwelling also refers to an apartment, house, and/or complex. Section 10, severability clause. In the event that any section, subsection, paragraph, subdivision, clause, phrase, or other provision or portion of this ordinance shall be judged invalid or unconstitutional, the same shall not affect the validity of this law's code section or chapter as a whole or any part of provision other than the part so decided to be invalid or unconstitutional, and the remaining provision in this ordinance, code, section, or chapter shall remain in effect. Section 11 of this deal clause. All ordinances, resolutions, parts thereof in conflict herewith or hereby be ill to the extent of such conflict.
We'll check through ordinance number 2214 on its first reading.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
I have a question.
Okay, go ahead. Oh, okay. Mr. McLone.
You know, I believe that that whenever you have a piece of property of residence, multi-family, duplex, triplex, whatever you want to call it, and you're renting that out, you're depreciating it, you're writing off the expenses. So if you're going to consider that a business, then, you know, then you can't discriminate between single family either, like was mentioned, or duplexes. It's the same principle. It's the same thing. You're just making it a deal of numbers. Now, as far as a business, you know, people buy these individual houses or duplexes or triplexes as supplemental income and/or, you know, a hedge for retirement, you know, betting on the appreciation, hoping for appreciation. And at some point, you know, to liquidate, or retirement income just off the rental itself whenever it's paid for. As far as being equated as a business, you know, until you get maybe in the numbers of 10 or more where it's actually... It takes some real management, you know, a lot of bookkeeping other than what most people can do in their home. You know, it becomes... And I'm not sure where that line should be, but I don't believe that it's at three, for business licenses. I don't... I just don't... I don't like that. And I'm not so sure that we really have the right... And I... But you can correct me if I'm wrong. Everything that is operating now is grandfathered, basically, except they would have to buy a business license, is what you're saying. Is that... Did I catch that right or wrong?
That's as best I understand right now. With the limitation that I expressed in the R1 district, that if they have started business since 1985 and did not get a conditional use permit, they need to get a conditional use permit. But everybody else should be considered legally non-conforming if they were in business prior to the start of the effective date of the ordinance.
Thank you.
What's the matter?
Okay, and we've talked about this a little bit last weekend, and I'm still totally lost and confused. And I don't know who this letter is from, but it was in my box. What is the difference between rental houses and duplexes and multiple family? What is the difference?
A rental house is one unit, one family. A duplex is a single building owned by two parties, normally occupied by those parties. Just like a single-family house is the responsibility of the property owner, so are duplexes.
Okay.
Okay, as far as rental houses, that's outside my purview.
So multiple family is more like apartment, building-type situation?
It is. Apartment, house. It can be known either way as multi-family dwellings or apartment houses.
Okay.
Anything else, Mr. Lesswick? Okay.
I have a question.
Yes, sir. If council recognizes you to come up?
No, not me. I'll recognize.
I have my opinion too.
I'm really... I'm totally confused by what pretty much everything Mr. Lesswick said. That every multi-family in town is non-conforming. If they're in C3, they're used by rights. So I don't see how those apartment houses out on Pivot Rock Road would be non-conforming because they're in a C3 zone, which is multi-family housing zone. So how are they... I'm really totally confused. I'm confused as to how my property in R1 is exempt when there's no mention in this ordinance of zoning districts at all. So according to this ordinance, it applies evenly across the board. My biggest concern is this inspection that happens upon sale of a property. There's nothing in here that specifies what that inspection involves, what codes would be required to have the property brought up to. My house that was built 100 years ago and remodeled in 1980, if I sell that now, is that going to be required to come up to 2015 standards?
It's not your requirement. It'll be whoever purchases the property from you.
But they won't even be... There won't be any way to set a price because there won't be any way to figure out how much that would even cost to... There's no way to even estimate what it would take to remod... Wire an old house, replumb an old house to bring it up to current code.
Wiring and plumbing is... If it doesn't fall... There are minimum code requirements for all buildings. And if they don't abide by that, then it only occurs at the point of sale.
Well, why is it only for multi-family, though? Why doesn't that happen for every property in town?
Because they are for every property in town. I have to fall under restrictions on my plumbing.
Do you have to get a C of O when you sell your single-family house or your duplex? And a duplex is not necessarily... Is not owner occupied, as was indicated. A duplex is a property. I have a duplex that both apartments are rented. I have single-family houses. Why are the people in my multi-family house more important to this council than the people in a single-family house or a duplex? I just don't understand where this whole thing is coming from. I don't understand the purpose of it. It's not a business. And there's just so many things that are not spelled out here that are unknowns in the future.
I'll answer the question if you give me a chance.
Well, I have the floor right now, and as soon as...
Well, you ask a question, and I'm answering it.
Well, can you save your answer? Okay, please.
Because of things like little old ladies that want to rent out a room to somebody. That's not a business. That's an income that helps them make it through the month. But when you start getting up in three and four properties in one building, then it does approach a business, and that's where we decided to draw the line.
Okay. Let's take a pause here just a minute so we can change the CD.
Open the door.
We've gone past the length of our CD. That's what?
Open it.
Why?
Because it drives you crazy. I told you that before.
Is there anything?
Because you can't see it.
Please open the door.
I'm never under, anyway. No.
Thank you.
It just drives me insane.
And, okay, then we'll just do that marriage and get it over with. Can we put an end to this conversation, too?
Okay, is this...
I'm never under, but it's either open or closed. I hate that halfway.
Can anybody tell me if you have a building now that's non-conforming?
We can't talk right now. We're not being recorded.
Well, this isn't...
Yeah, it is.
Yes, it is. If you're in session, yes, it is.
Okay, which is for my personal because I don't know anything about this.
Just whistle.
Whistle while you wait.
I'm tired. I'm getting a little spacey because I'm getting really tired.
I thought that three hours was bad for planning. I was having a heart attack.
Two hours should be the length of any meeting.
Who had 10:30?
You're on two hours, and you're not really...
I had midnight.
Armed.
Any meeting, it goes back to the length of the time that your butt can sit in a chair. It's over.
That included a workshop that we'd already had here.
Yeah, well, just getting warmed up.
Oh.
Do I have time to go down?
You're a night person.
Is he recording us now? What is he doing?
Switching.
Can I go get a drink?
Right there behind you. I'll drink it, and you can drink it. It's not going to flow out in it.
Clear water.
Well, up until now, it is. Sorry, those guys. They're just saying, no, I can't put that in the water. Arrest me. You know.
All right, we're ready. Okay. Bill, go ahead.
Okay, and I guess before you all vote on this, I would like an answer to this simple question as it applies to me. I have a legal, non-conforming fourplex in R1. I cannot... I will never meet the parking requirements on that. I don't believe I have to because I am legally non-conforming. I already have my license to operate there.
Yes.
So what, do I... Am I... Do I have to apply for license under this law?
Yes. But you don't have to address parking or all of the other ancillary issues.
Why not?
Because you are legally non-conforming.
Well, why do I need to get a license then?
Because that's the law that we're writing.
And you're a business.
It's not a business.
By us, it is.
You'll have a second and a third reading if you're not satisfied with the answers tonight.
Okay, is it a business? Is my duplex a business? My duplex isn't a business. My two single-family house rentals are not businesses, but my fourplex is.
How do you just...
You're out of order.
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry.
So, and when I sell my house, I'm... The new owner will have to get a C of O, even though the non-conforming... though the nonconforming-
Correct.
The legal nonconforming use transfers with the property.
Correct.
So why would, it does. Legal non, read the code, James, nonconforming transfers with the property.
It requires an inspection is all.
And what does that inspection entail? Can you pass this ordinance without telling us what this inspection entails?
Mr. Lesswood, do you remember what the inspection entailed? Because you talked to Bobby, it was just three or four, a fire extinguisher? Separate exit.
And the alarm thingy.
That's as far as it'll go. You can just talk right there, you don't even have to get up. I'll hold it for you.
If I don't get up, I'll stumble over my head and work.
Okay. Jump on it.
The two key elements that I remember from Bobby Ray's description were a fire extinguisher, an emergency exit.
And the little alarm thingies that-
A smoke detector.
Detector, and that was it, that's the inspection.
That's it.
Yeah, thank you.
Well, can that be written into the ordinance if that's what the inspection is?
No.
So that way, there's a, so that when there's another-
That's city code.
So that when there's another, that's in the city code, that that's what it, in the fire code, or where would that be?
Ask Bobby Ray.
Moving right along.
Okay, well, thank you.
Talk to Bobby tomorrow. Yes, okay. Is that all there is to that one?
Is this the only multifamily?
We have a motion, a second.
We have a motion, we have a motion to approve on the first reading, and we have a second.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay, that is first reading, taken care of. Moving on to number two, new business.
Let's postpone that to our next meeting.
Second.
All in favor say aye on the postpone.
Aye.
Aye.
Was there anything that we do on there, or something?
Just reason the old school, just, we just postponed it.
Can't we just say, do a vote?
Did you get, did you get it clear?
We didn't even get discussion-
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Postpone it.
Okay, aye.
Just postpone.
All right.
A meeting could take, what, 10 seconds?
Okay. Next would be discussion of resolution celebrating, make sure I get this right.
So moved?
Yes.
Now, let me finish it.
Oh.
So it'll be in the record. Resolution celebrating marriage equality.
So moved.
Don't jump ahead of me.
Second.
Floor's open for discussion, Mr. DeVito.
Move to assign this resolution a number and pass it on its reading.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
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 Real call on resolution?
Yes.
If you're going to prove it on the first reading.
If we're going to what?
Prove it on reading.
Oh, thank you. Oh, okay, got it, I'm sorry.
And so we shall have it.
Oh, my gosh, yeah, oh.
Six-four-three.
Pardon?
Six-four-three.
Six-four-three. It's late. Thank you.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Zeller?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. DeVito?
Yes.
Mr. Perkett?
No.
Mr. McLemone?
Yeah.
Five-one?
Okay.
Resolution number six-four-three. Resolution in commemoration and celebration of marriage equality, whereas the City Council of the City of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, was the first and only city council in Arkansas to officially endorse universal solo marriage for all otherwise qualified adult Arkansans and all Americans by adopting resolution number six-zero-eight in 2012, and to enact the state's first and only domestic partnership ordinance, number two-zero-five-two in 2007, and to provide access to health insurance for the domestic partners of city workers in 2011, and to amend its equal opportunity, to amend its equal employment opportunity policy prohibiting discrimination on the basis of sexual orientation via ordinance number two-zero-six-two in 2006, and whereas on May 10th, 2014, Eureka Springs became the first city in Carroll County, in all of Arkansas, and in the entire southern half of the United States, in which same-sex couples were granted marriage licenses by the Office of the County Clerk of Carroll County, and whereas commemorating that historic occasion with a public celebration is right and fitting for a city that places a premium on equality and recognizes marriage is a powerful and important affirmation of love and commitment, and a source of social support and recognition. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, that we congratulate all same-sex newlyweds licensed to marry and/or married in Eureka Springs and elsewhere throughout Arkansas on and after May 10th, 2014, and welcome them, their friends, and families to celebrate at the Married to Equality Reception in Eureka Springs on August 2nd, 2014.
Brings us to City Council, I'm sorry, to agenda setting. Mr. DeVito?
Nothing here.
Mr. McLemone?
It's not necessarily an agenda-setting thing, but it was in regards to last meeting when I asked for a workshop on the sewer line, 62 West.
It's in the works.
It's in the works, okay.
Trying to get everybody agree that they can meet up.
That's all I needed to know about that.
Mr. Mitchell?
The concept of conflict of interest, and some discussion about what constitutes a conflict of interest.
I'll second that. Sounds intriguing.
As an agenda item?
Yes, sir, as an agenda item.
Anything else?
No, sir, that was it, thank you.
Nothing.
What's the matter?
Dick Titus asked us to add the two fire stations to the agenda, and do we, need to have you, Sir Mayor, ask Reese to come in, or no? Since we don't know this about, I don't know if he's planning on doing it on his own, or whatever.
Uh, depends, I hope he's back by the 28th, he should be.
Okay, I'll second that.
Glad you remembered that.
Ms. Zeller?
I made notes.
Thank goodness.
Ms. Zeller, do you hear anything?
No, I don't have anything.
City Council comments, Mr. DeVito?
No comment.
Mr. McLemone?
Nope.
Mr. Mitchell?
I, no, I think I've said enough.
Mr. Perkett?
No.
Ms. Snyder?
Oh, yeah. I want to clarify what Ed Lesswood said about the planning vote. It was not six-zero, it was five-one-zero, I had to vote present, because I'm on council, and that was within a conflict. Isn't, and I want to verify, isn't that what we said, if it's going to be an issue between council and planning, I, the sitting councilman cannot vote, right? Okay, that's, I was pretty sure, I just wanted to verify while we're talking. Five-zero-one, okay, I'll see that backwards. Also want to reiterate that this Wednesday at 11:45 at Local Flavor, Mark Pryor's parents will be there. Anybody is welcome, everybody is welcome. I will be tied up at a Eureka meeting, so I can't make it, but you can go to either one, actually. So, that will be this Wednesday at 11:45. And are we supposed to be getting a workshop going in regards to the hospital?
Yes, there's, yeah, we're pressed with a lot of people, and it's hard to get everybody around that.
Okay. Okay, that's all I have.
Ms. Zeller? Council comment? Another? Okay. Only thing I have is a list of events, I hope I can read them here. July the 15th through the 18th, last few days of Opera in the Ozarks, July the 18th through the 20th through the 16th, Annual Tire Festival, July the 20th, Some Like It Hot is the movie at the Auditorium at 7:00 PM on Sunday, July the 20th, Happy Birthday reception for June Westfall, 3:00 to 5:00 PM at the Historical Museum. Those are two adjournments. All in favor say aye. Any opposed?
Aye.